Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order for the Planning Commission. We'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming. There are request to speak forms in the back. If you feel so inclined, go ahead and complete the form and bring it up to the staff table, and it will be submitted and we'll give you time on the agenda to do, to speak and tell us your concerns. Okay, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All arise. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brian Anderson, Chair, is absent. Vice Chair Bloomfield?
Here.
David Caveney?
Here.
Noah Munt?
Here.
Scott September?
Here.
John Simon?
Here.
Les Smith?
Here.
Alternate Nathan Mackin?
Here.
And alternate Philip Albrandi? Thank you. You have a form?
Thank you. Alright, we discussed earlier moving the agenda, or switching the agenda up a little bit and moving items 25 and 26 up to the consent items. And we feel like that's appropriate, so Commissioner?
Chairman, I'm moved to approve the agenda as printed, with the exceptions of moving items 25 and 26 from non-consent to consent.
Seconded by Les Smith. Commissioner Smith? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The Commissioner Board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented on, or asking that a matter be put on the future agenda. Is there any communication from citizens that fit this? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number 10. Commissioner, or, excuse me, Councilmember Peterson.
I thought you demoted me, Vice Chair.
We just liked having you back on this one.
I would be proud to be back on this commission. Vice Chair, thank you for being here tonight, and to all the members of the commission, Happy New Year, Happy 2020. It's gonna be a big and exciting year here in the town of Gilbert as we celebrate our 100-year birthday and centennial. Last night, we kicked it off with Howler from the Coyotes visiting us with a group of children, and they brought us a big cake to celebrate, and on Saturday, Howler and the Coyotes, members of the administration and team potentially, will be out there at the farmer's market. You can go and have pictures taken with kids, and helping us again to kick off this 100-year celebration here in our great town of Gilbert. Another thing that we're doing is launching a rebrand, and until midnight tonight, we're asking people to take the survey on the rebranding of our community, and they can go to rebrand.gilbertaz.gov and fill out that survey. We'd really love to hear from everybody. I already sent all of you an email about the digital state of the town that will be coming up on Thursday, January 22nd at Harkins Theater. Due to the remodel at the theater, we've had to break that down into two times, two showings this year, one at 5:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. Those are filling up quickly, so if anybody would like to attend, I highly recommend that they visit gilbertaz.gov stateofthetown. As of last night, our Gilbert council meetings moved to Tuesday evenings. We will now be meeting here on Tuesday evenings, mostly the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and we think that will work well since our staff is technically off on Fridays. I say technically because so many of them put in so much time that a lot of them are here anyway. And at 6 o'clock on Thursdays, they'll be able to go home and enjoy a three-day weekend like they should be since they work four days a week. Last evening, we had the pleasure of voting in Scott Anderson as our Vice Mayor for 2020. I think it's a perfect choice since Scott is, as we like to call him, our elder statesman on our council, and he'll be serving as the Vice Mayor for this whole year until next January. And again, it is our centennial, and I hope to see you all enjoy that as much as you can and out as many events as you can, and to hope to see several of you at the State of the Town on the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alright, moving on, we have the public, we have the consent agenda. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The Commissioner Board may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the Commissioner Board shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. On the public hearing consent calendar tonight, we have item number 11, which is DR 19-153, the post at Cooley Station, an Autozone. Item number 12, DR 19-79, Rivillon Lake Office Buildings. Item number 13, DR 19-108, Sun Valley Community Church in South Gilbert. Item number 14, DR 19-135, Water Market Gilbert Town Square. Item number 15, DR 19-150, Fox Earth Station. Item number 16, UP 18-42 and PH 504-00A, A.Santan, which is to be tabled. Item number 17, DR 19-117, Copenhagen East Valley. Item number 18, DR 19-136, Flower Child. UP, or item number 19, UP 19-35, Quintana at Verdi. It's going to be continued to February 5th, 2020. And DR 19-109, Quintana at, Quintana at Verdi is continued. Site plan was conditional use permit, and one of the ones for site plan and landscape. Both will be continued to February 5th, 2020. And then UP, item number 21, UP 19-40, Power and Ray Storage Outdoor, tabled. Item number 22, UP 19-41, Power and Ray Storage Indoor, tabled. And item number 23, DR 19-119, Power and Ray, also tabled. And then moving up, items number 25 and 26, which are general plan and zoning for Melrose Commercial. And that is on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? I think they can all go together.
Can I make a motion for even those tabled and continued in one motion? Okay, so I move to approve the consent agenda as outlined by the Vice Chairman.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Caveney and seconded by Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? An animus. Okay, we are now to the public hearing, non-consent calendar. These items will be heard in an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the Commissioner Board by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the Commissioner Board. First up, Stephanie with DR 19-156, Verdi at Cooley Station, Phase 3.
Thank you, Vice Chair Commissioners. Tonight, we have DR 19-156 for Verdi at Cooley Station, Phase 3. This did not come before you to study session, as DRs typically do. We've worked with the applicant through the design of the project, and we are pretty comfortable with their comments, so we didn't have any, anything that we were really seeking for input and discussion on this one, but wanted to show it to you to see if you do have any input. But we are recommending approval. So this is within the Cooley Station area. It's on the southwest corner of Williamsfield and Rucker, so part of the Gateway Character Area and in the overflight district of the airport. This has been going on for about two years now. The master site plan was approved just last, exactly last year in January of 2019. So they approved the master site plan, which was the internal circulation networks of the roads of this center, which is meant to be kind of a lifestyle center. So under the Gateway Village Center and the Gateway Business Center, are, a lot of different uses are allowed, so it's really meant to kind of be somewhere where you can live nearby and able to go to any type of use or facility that you're really seeking. So that's what the goal is for this Village Center area. And then there was a Phase 2 that came in earlier in, I guess, earlier this year. I guess last year now, because it's 2020. So last year came in Phase 2, so that was when you saw the pedestrian plaza, which is a key part to lead down to a future pedestrian corridor, to the future commuter rail station along the railroad, and two buildings along with an amphitheater. So Phase 3 is going to be what you see in yellow. So we're going to be looking at the west parking lot and four buildings. So two of them are B1 and E are going to be fronting along Williamsfield Road. Part of the Gateway Village Center zoning district is that, is a zero-foot build-to line, so that's why you're going to see those buildings really pushed up against the property line along Williamsfield Road, because we're really trying to create a streetscape in this area and trying to limit where the parking is placed. And then we're also looking at buildings B2 and C, which are along the west side of that main north-south private drive aisle. And then just some broken-up table to the right of the square footage of the buildings. All of these are multi-tenant suites, and they're going to be comprised of retail and restaurants. Each restaurant is going to have an outdoor patio space, and the developer is allowing, once the restaurants are put in, to kind of allow them to have their own expression of coming back through to do an admin DR to modify those outdoor spaces to kind of go to their liking. There are design guidelines that were part of the first phase that they will be using that are also listed in your packet as well. And then just looking at the landscape plan, this site is really trying to focus on trees and providing a lot of coverage for their landscape. So while there's no really landscape requirements, 5% in the Gateway Village Center, this entire master site is providing 35% for the landscape. This landscape plan depicts it a little bit better, but they are having a little pedestrian node area with a sculpture. It's undetermined at this time what that sculpture is going to be, but it will be an art piece along the frontage of the site. And then they also have different pavers and seat benches and potted plants to just try and really create an environment that people want to walk around. For color and materials, they are following the design guidelines, by using brick, metals, stucco, and some wood composite material. The brick that they are using, they did switch out for a very similar of the Cooley red brick. It's really, it's pretty much the same color, it's just a different title. So we've explored other options of allowing people to kind of match the site walls while still looking into other types of bricks and colors. This is just a building layout to show the site a little bit more clearly with some color. And then I'll take you through the elevation. So B1 is what's going to be seen along Williamsfield Road, so this top picture is what you will see from the frontage. This site, we really encourage them to try and not really have a back-of-house to these buildings, so that all the sides elevations have 360-degree architecture. So we do feel that they've met that here, and each building you'll see will have these yellow flower placements. These are meant to be murals. It's undetermined what it will be, but they just wanted to have placeholders to show you where the murals will be placed. And these are some renderings to kind of show you what that will look like once it's built. And these are renderings for the side and from the internal parking lot. For building B2, this will be along that north-south private drive, and will have a restaurant tenant in this space with covered awning. And then just to show you, renderings really show what it's actually gonna look like here. So they have really tried to provide different styles to each tenant to kind of give them their own identity, so they've really focused on that as well. And also trying to pull, while it's contemporary, trying to pull some farmhouse style to these buildings. So for building C, they are focusing on more of a white color and the red brick. And I'll just go to renderings for you. So this is what will be on that corner. That will be right across from the amphitheater. That's proposed to be a restaurant as well. And then some other tenant suites down the main drive aisle. Building E is the smallest building proposed, and they are using a little bit different variation of their parapet height to kind of pay homage to that kind of barn style for horse barns that you see. And then here are some renderings for that site as well. And this is just kind of an overall view of what the site will look like. So these two buildings over here are what was previously approved for buildings J and HI. And this is the amphitheater as part of the plaza. So they just provided some different rendering viewpoints. And then just if you wanted to view the previously approved buildings, because they did get approved administratively once they went to Planning Commission for study session, this is what they did end up getting approved for. And these are just some guidelines included. And if you guys want to look at the floor plans or lighting, they're are proposing a lot of different lighting for each tenant. It's kind of really a unique identity for each one. But we are recommending approval, just for the recommended conditions of approval to match the documents. These are typical standard conditions to have site plan notes, and then signage will be approved later through a gateway sign plan. See if you have any questions or comments. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that. This has got to be kind of a fun project to work on.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's got a different vibe to it, so good job. Any Commissioners, any questions, concerns? Caveney?
Yeah, so Stephanie, I'm just looking, you know, you mentioned the 360 architecture, which seems very appropriate for this development. And there are restaurants, and so that immediately comes to my, where is, where are the grease interceptors? Where are the dumpsters? How are we gonna manage trash? How are we gonna hide that? So can you walk me through that, because I'm not seeing that here on the plan, and I'm probably just missing it.
Sure, let me get to the master site plan. For the master site plan, it's a little zoomed out, but this site is proposing to do, why is the word escaping me? The trash compacters. So they have trash compacters located, and they have a couple trash enclosures. They are still working through exactly if they're needing any further changes to restaurants once they, I guess, solidify them. So we do have some administrative design reviews coming forth for such, for building J, for example, because they have, are going to make improvements to that specific restaurant tenant. But for grease interceptors, I don't remember where they are all placed at the moment.
Yeah, I see the building sewer connection, but I don't see a grease interceptor necessarily. So okay, well, I guess this is, those are things I'm just concerned with, that those be placed at this level. I, I'm sure they are, so I'm just concerned that those be managed well. I mean, 360 architecture is great if you manage that well, the trash and the, and the, you know, the grease interceptors and all the other aspects of that, but okay. I think that's it for the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Caveney. Good comments. Anybody else? We are missing our architect tonight on this designer view. Alright. Stephanie, I don't think we have anything else, questions for the applicant, so... Anybody? Close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. If there's any discussion at the DIAS, or we could entertain a motion, or... If there's no comments, does anybody want to hear the application, or the applicant's presentation? No questions or comments, so I think we'll just entertain a motion.
Vice Chair, I move that we approve the findings of fact and approve DR 19-159, Verdi at Cooley Station, Phase 3, with these, subject to the conditions of staff on page 7.
One minor correction, there's DR 19-156.
Oh, thank you.
Just did 159, but other than that?
Second.
Okay. Proposed by Commissioner September and seconded by Commissioner Mackin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Alright.
Commissioner Bloomfield?
Yes.
Sorry, I just, I had emailed Tracy, and I have to leave at 6:45, so I was going to have Commissioner Albrandi come up.
Okay.
I just figured before you announce the next one to slide that in.
Thank you, appreciate that. Bringing up Commissioner Albrandi. Step on up. That tees us up to item number 27 and 28. We'll hear them together from Nathan Acero at Val Vista.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Bloomfield, Planning Commission. This is, in fact, Acero at Val Vista. Yeah, okay, good. So you saw this last month as a study session item. It's just under 15 acres, located at the, well, this is Melrose Alignment. There's Val Vista, Jermaine down here to the south. So it's essentially at the northeast corner of what is Melrose Alignment and Quartz, but Melrose obviously does not exist at this location at this time. However, you can see that, well, we'll talk about that, but it will once, if this were to develop. So this is just an aerial, obviously demonstrating kind of general location and things of that nature. The request is for a general plan amendment from RC to residential 14 to 25, and a rezoning from RC to conventional multifamily medium. This is, again, as I mentioned, it's conventional, so it's not a PAD, which is somewhat unique in, in this day and age, but that's a good thing, I think. They did give us a site plan that, what could look like, or what they're anticipating. You would see this, if this were approved, you would see this at a designer view level in terms of site design, layout. But what's important here, and why I mentioned it, and why the applicant provided it, was you can see the green is the Melrose Alignment, that Melrose would be constructed from Val Vista to Quartz with this development, or the half-street, the north half, which is, I believe, 24 feet of pavement, but it's a 40-foot right-of-way there. And you can see the primary access would be off Melrose. So secondary egress and emergency access would be on Quartz. But again, you would see this at DR. This is an aerial that demonstrates, you know, I mentioned in my report that it's part of the Val Vista medical growth area. You heard about another project, or it was on consent across the street, Melrose Commercial, I think it's called. It's also in this area. All this is essentially, and I, this aerial shows the whole medical growth area. Of course, it's really just something identified in our general plan that helps the town demonstrate to developers that it anticipates various uses that are medical office, or medical, or mixture of uses that help support that. And in your report, there's a number of policies and things that I've mentioned in your report that we found that, and we feel that the change does help to demonstrate compliance with, with the general plan and how it would support, you know, a housing component to this medical growth area, among, among other things. The applicant provided this general plan analysis, how they feel that the general plan change is warranted as well, and how it's not located on Val Vista, but it's on a collector. It provides necessary infrastructure for this area. And I hope I put my aerial in the wrong place, but you can see that this 15-acre site is part of a overall 80 acres, and as it's developing, we have congregate care to the north, QT and Dutch Bros and car washes and things like that, culvers that are going in. And then you have this entire 40 acres to the south that would remain RC. Staff and the applicant, as well as the chamber, has provided a letter of support that feel that this current version of the request for this, you know, for over many years, there's been a number of potential requests or requests for this type of use, multifamily use in this area. We all believe that this is a good site design, a good location where it's at, provides necessary infrastructure to help the remaining 40 acres to the south and things of that nature develop, and kind of provides a balance of uses in this area. So staff is supportive of the change, and with that, here's my staff recommendations. There are a couple wordsmithing edits to D and E that I provided you in the addendum, but they're really just kind of changing some words around. So with that, I'd be happy to take any, any questions at this time.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, any questions on this particular project? General plan and zoning cases? No, it makes sense, okay. Nothing up here?
Okay.
Right. Would the applicant like to say anything? Nothing to say? That's unusual. Sorry, Ralph. Sorry, Ralph, yeah. Sorry, that softball came and I just had to pitch it, so dang it. Okay. We do have an addendum up here, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, Nathan. And I think we'll, if there's, we'll close the public hearing if there's any discussion at the DIAS. Personally, I like this, I like the plan. I appreciated the opportunity to meet with the applicants and have them talk about the project and what they like about it and what they're looking forward to it, and I, I just really liked it, so... Okay, anyone to make a motion?
Yeah, Vice Chairman, I move to recommend the town council approval of GP 19-06 a minor general plan amendment. And for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend, oh, I guess we could do a separate motion for the zoning?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to approve GP, or to recommend approval of GP 1906, subject to the attached addendum from staff. Second?
Seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vice Chairman, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 19-18, as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Simon again. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, that brings us to item number 29. Thank you, everyone. Item number 29, permit 11-05, a cure leaf. And Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bloomfield, Planning Commission. UP 11-05-A is an amendment to an existing conditional use permit for, I believe it's the only operating medical marijuana facility within Gilbert. It's located on the southwest corner, well, more southwest of the southwest corner of McQueen and Elliott Road. It's in the Elliott Commerce Business Park. It's been operating there since approval of the conditional use permit back in 2011. They are operating a 3,000-square-foot facility, which is the maximum required, or maximum allowed per the Land Development Code. They are given 10 parking spaces for the facility, and just to note, in the past nine years that they've been operating, there hasn't been any record of any code violations or any other legal issues with the town. Seems to be very smooth, well-oiled facility that they're running. The modification is to, there's, there's two modifications to the conditions of the original use permit. The first one is a two-parter, so condition modification 1A is to remove the requirement for the planning commission to give approval for minor floor plan modifications. Staff members are still going to be reviewing these floor plans through tenant improvements, just like every other business. It's just that it won't have to come back in front of the commission when anything internal is adjusted, rooms are moved and moved around. Any exterior changes obviously would still be subject to the administrative design review process, and just to clarify, as I mentioned in my staff report, this does not permit floor plan expansion whatsoever. This is just for rearrangement, the internal floor plan of the facility. It's still subject to the 3,000-square-foot maximum requirement in the Land Development Code. Modification 1B is to remove the requirement to provide a security plan directly to the, to the town. The security plan is already approved and reviewed by the State of Arizona Department of Health Services, and in the back of your packet, there's about 30 pages, and I tried to help you narrow that down with the first page of the requirements of these security plans in the state code. And if you notice, it's 30 pages. It is a lot more extensive than what Gilbert currently requires for a security plan in our land development code. Staff has also reviewed this request with Town PD and, and the attorney's office, and we believe that a sworn statement will satisfy the needs of the town while still provide the same overview in, in terms of security. The second condition of the original use permit, it's, it's honestly, it's no longer relevant. It's, it's just a cleanup. There was an initial, they had a planned phase two for a grow area. Those plans are not even, are not even in the works at all. So just a cleanup of the use permit with that modification. We did receive a correspondence from the public, which I did place on your, on your chairs at the break. I did try my best to provide an accurate synopsis of that, but generally speaking, the Elliott Commerce Park Owners Association states that they don't believe that this modification meets findings two and four of the findings of fact needed for approval of this modification. They state that the unexpected traffic volume and parking requirements weren't taken into account when the original use permit was approved. Also, they believe that the decision to locate medical marijuana for the original approval into light industrial didn't take in consideration the effects on the other surrounding businesses, and they also state that they don't believe that the use itself is, should be, I guess, permitted in the light industrial zoning district and should be moved to retail locations. However, that's more focusing on the original approval and whether or not the actual facility would be, should be located in the light industrial where it was originally improved and not really geared towards these modifications the applicant is proposing. So as I mentioned, to approve this modification, there needs to be four findings of fact. They are, I have detailed in your staff report why staff's analysis of whether or not these, this proposal meets those findings of fact, and staff does believe that they do, so we make our recommendation to the Planning Commission to approve the, the modification to UP 1105-A. I will be happy to have, answer any questions. Also, the applicant is here for any questions you might have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Commissioners?
Yeah, Vice Chair, I have a question.
Please.
Josh, is, is this an allowed use in LI zoning?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner September, it is allowed use in light industrial with a conditional use permit, which is what was approved back in 2011.
Thank you.
If I remember right, it's the only zoning that allows it, so, yeah. So obviously, the purpose of a conditional use permit is to evaluate and determine if they're meeting conditions, so have, has the town done any further exploration of this concern, and, and does it in any way violate the conditions that, in which it was originally approved? Do we know? I mean, bar, and I know we're here to talk about the two particular requests, but I think there's rationale to maybe step back and say, is the conditional use permit being met in terms of it?
I was able, I only did get this about 3 o'clock, so I was able to go through the old staff report, the concerns about parking. Parking was actually taken consideration. There are square footage requirements for, the, the parking requirements for this facility, so they still do have to adhere to those. And as to whether or not this is an allowed use, that's above my purview for, for this application.
Okay, sure. All right. Well, maybe, maybe we need to take that up at another time.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Bloomfield and Commissioner Cavaney. My understanding is there are no zoning violations? I don't know if the applicant wants to confirm that, but that was my understanding.
That is staff's understanding as well.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, hang on a second. Let's let Josh finish. I do, back, back to the interior renovations, and I certainly understand staff's recommendation that, hey, it's probably not a problem if they want to fiddle with their interior layout a little bit. I, I had occasion when we originally approved this to tour that facility, just to understand it better and make sure I knew what we were voting on. And when I did that, the one thing I did notice, that the only thing that concerns me about letting the interior be modified without commission review, and, and maybe staff can manage this, but I remember one of the conditions was that they were not allowed to sell any non-product-related paraphernalia. Yeah, and I saw hats, I saw t-shirts, I saw, I saw plenty of things that did not meet that requirement. So I'm concerned that perhaps this user is maybe not conforming in those areas, and so I'd certainly like to make sure that is not impacted by, maybe they're creating additional sales areas for those kinds of products and things like that. That's the only thing I'm thinking. Not that I want to see this case any more than anyone else does regularly, but, or this, this particular location, but that concerned me when I, when I toured. So that's the only hesitancy I have. Otherwise, I certainly understand interior modifications not being a big deal typically.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney, we actually took a staff field trip out there about two weeks ago as well, and I mean, it's, from what we saw, everything, and we went through the entire facility, everything was following the standards set forth in the, the conditions.
So they weren't selling any of that kind of paraphernalia anymore?
Not that I could see.
Okay. I haven't been back.
Unless they hit them really quick, but.
Yeah, okay. I haven't been back, admittedly, so, yeah.
All right. Please.
I noticed in the request to, to change the floor plan, they are asking to reconfigure the layout from probably some, some lower intensity type use to a higher intensity, would that also exacerbate possibly the, the traffic issue that seems to be a problem already? If, if they are doing more intensive use of that square footage rather than the, the, under the proposal, it says removing, it's adding patient waiting and medicine dispensing areas while eliminating the excess underutilized offices, storage, and other ancillary areas, which to their remarks are underutilized at the time. By converting and changing that over to higher intensity uses, would that cause an issue in, in your estimation?
Well, Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Mackin, I did look into that, and what you see on the screen is the original parking ratio in the original use permit. If you notice that right now, they were, with their current ratio, they were required seven, basically seven parking spaces. Now, if they were to expand these higher intense uses, they would still be subject to this requirement, so they are only allowed a maximum of 10 spaces, or they're required, would be required at least 10 spaces if they went up to that ratio. So it's, it's, they're, they're still subject to the parking requirements set forth in the Land Development Code.
And, and they currently would meet that requirement? They have specified dedicated spaces for their usage?
They have an additional three spaces available above what's required. As for that, that would be dependent on whatever they submit, and for a tenant improvement, I haven't seen any floor plans. I haven't reviewed anything, but when they come in for that tenant improvement, that's one thing that would be looked for. So if the more intense uses wouldn't be able to make that, then they'd have to scale it back to be able to meet that required parking ratio.
And has it been considered that, that possibly because of its specialized nature that it may, the, I'm assuming that we're, we're converting from office to retail spaces, is that correct?
From what I understand is that when the facility originally opened, they, they needed space in the back to, I guess, prepare the, the medicine, the product for human consumption. Now they have everything done as a central facility, so they need less of the medicine product onsite, so they don't need any of that storage area. So it would be, there, I guess their eventual intent is to make some of that, that previous storage slash cultivation, not cultivation, but preparation area more readily available for, I guess, retail sales.
Right. And, and so to my question is, in terms of parking requirements, are we going, we are, are we making a shift from, from the office parking requirements to retail in terms of reconfiguring that space?
That would be dependent, it would be more likely this residual storage on the bottom.
Okay.
That 1,500 square feet, so whatever square footage of storage that they currently have, then instead of being one to 1,000, one parking space for every 1,000 square feet, it would shift up to the one space for every 250 of the retail space that they're adding. So it would shift around, but they would still be required to adhere to those parking standards.
And, and it's, I mean, part of it's my lack of understanding of this, this, this retail environment. Is it possible that marijuana dispensaries have considerably more traffic than, than any other retail space or operation, or would you say that it's equivalent, that, that the retail requirement is suitable for that, that usage?
When we did go to the facility, I mean, I can't say 100%, I couldn't give you any scientific data just because we were only there for one morning, but what they had, we parked right in, we came up with two cars, and we parked right in front of the facility, and there was empty spaces all around. There's quite a lot of people inside, but it was a quick turnaround, so even when we left, there was still considerable, and I mean, maybe 90% of the parking lot was unfilled or unparked when, when we left too, and it was considerably busy. So it did appear that the parking standards did meet what they needed.
Thank you.
So I think though, I think there would be peak times, though, right, when people may visit, so I, I think, Commissioner Mackin's bringing up a great point, that maybe there needs to be further scrutiny on whether or not light industrial parking requirements are appropriate for a retail dispensary, right? That, that I think is, is perhaps something that we ought to, we ought to maybe explore further outside of this particular case, but, but it makes sense that this is really being treated as a retail experience in a light industrial environment, and, and maybe there is an element that isn't right there in that mix. Because we're, we're clearly feeling the complaint through the, the association of that, so I don't think that can tailor what we need to do tonight, but I think it's a good point to be made, yeah.
And Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney, the, the actual parking requirement isn't specifically for retail and light industrial, that's retail across the board.
Well, actually, I believe this is light industrial, that it's probably.
It is, it is zone light industrial, but the parking requirement isn't specifically for retail in light industrial, that's for any retail.
No, I, I understand that. I'm saying it maybe needs to be. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, I see, I see.
Yeah. Yeah. So we still need to get to the point where we can vote on whether or not we're okay with interior renovations not coming through the commission every time?
Correct.
And if the security component needs to be?
Josh, I think, I got a little mixed up on that, on that last point that Commissioner Cavaney was trying to make. These parking spaces requirement that you have up here are required for all retail spaces across the town regardless of zoning.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, that's correct.
Okay. So light industrial, it could be this way no matter what, what, as long as the use is retail, this is the parking requirements.
That's correct.
It, it seems like we should let the applicant come up and, and say a few words and, and correct us and, and direct us a little bit, so go ahead.
Vice Chair Commissioners, Lindsey Shuby with the law firm of Gamage and Burnham. I can't believe Ralph Pugh gave up an opportunity to speak, and I mocked him, and now here I am speaking. But it's nice to see you all. I don't make it out here as often as Mr. Pugh, so it's a great opportunity to see some of you who did the tours. And, you know, I don't even know if I need the, you know, I'm, I'm not going to correct anything. Josh did such a great job, and, and your staff did all come out and do a nice tour in the same way that we did when we did the text amendment to increase the hours of operation. And when I was here a couple of years ago and we did that text amendment, and we also addressed the, what we could sell onsite, and also addressed a secondary point of egress for emergency only, we wanted to make sure that, that we were in good standing with the fire department, with the police department. We have always been in good standing with the Department of Health Services. They come out and visit twice a year, if you recall. So there's that double level of regulation and scrutiny in this type of business as opposed to, you know, another retail business like a, a Walgreens, a liquor store, or, you know, a little clothing boutique. So we've got that double regulatory framework, and I am happy to say that we are still very much in good standing with both the town of Gilbert in terms of compliance, and the Department of Health Services and, and the, the regulatory standards and the two, the two inspections we have a year there. So we have been in operation since 2011. The only issue we've heard about parking was one of our neighbors, so to speak to the parking, there's a lot of parking out there. We, we allocate 10 on our site plan, and when your building department does its review, it sees 10 spots, and we meet code. However, the parking spots are all common elements. Our neighbor at one point, you know, if, our two doors were kind of close together, and they did say, you know, we would really like to reserve three spots in front of, in front of our front door so that our customers can get to us. We said, don't tell the property association, but put some signs up. Sure, block those three for you, absolutely. And if you have any questions, comments, issues, come talk to us. And we haven't had concerns. We went and checked, I checked with the store manager today, so the boots on the ground, not just the, you know, the corporate person that I speak to on a regular basis, but to make sure they're not getting complaints, and they're not. And the one nice thing about this is I was able to speak with a representative of the, of the property management company, letting them know that if they have any problems with any of our clients, patients, customers, if they have problems with parking, to let us know, because we absolutely, the Property Owners Association, we're a member of, it's important that we all get along, but you can't fix a problem that you don't know you have. So I would say, like any retail business, at times, there, there may be some, some peak concerns, yes, but we truly have not had any concerns, or any issues out there, and we absolutely welcome any. And we absolutely welcome any form of communication and involvement with the Property Owners Association because it's important to us, too. And it's important that we're a good neighbor to our neighbors as we want other neighbors to be good to us. Again, the modification of the stipulations, it was funny, I ran into Mike Malillo that some of you know, the city of Phoenix a couple of weeks ago, and I said, Mike, you put a stipulation on that conditional use permit in Gilbert that said we have to be in conformance with a certain floor plan. And if Mike is watching, well, if he was in Phoenix, I think he lives there now, but he said, I know, Lynn, none of us knew what was going to happen. None of us knew how this program was going to roll out. He said, you guys have proven to be good operators. So, I think the reason why that stipulation, why you guys all put it on and city council approved it in 2011, is because we didn't know how the program was going to roll out. It still goes through the town review process. It still goes through the building department. And as to the intensity, this is a fabulous dispensary. It's a fabulous community here, and you don't have a lot of dispensaries, so it is a well-traffic dispensary. That said, with the addition of these point of sales and how they're going to be laid out with our internal improvements, we will move people quicker. So, one of our issues with parking is that sometimes we get a little backlogged in the waiting area, and I can't remember the commissioners that were there on the tour, whether there was a backlog when we were there. But if anything, there's a parking situation because sometimes our patients have to wait too long. With the additional retail space, we also are going to have the ability to preorder online. You still have to come in, you still have to show your card, you still have to do all those things. But I really do think with these internal improvements, that it will help the customer experience, the patient experience move through at a faster pace, therefore alleviating some of those parking spots. And as for the security plan, you know, I would love to take credit for that idea, but I borrowed it from our friends at the city of Mesa. They actually took it out of their ordinance about a year and a half ago, and the reason why is because, you know, we don't really want that to be a public document. I don't want my security plan in my home to be a public document available to someone. So, again, the regulatory framework at AZDHS, I will tell you, they come in, they look at the security cameras, they back them up four days, they make sure that everything is compliant. So, the security part of this is very, very important. It's important to us. The only reason why I would like to take it out is because I don't think it should be a public document that's available to the public. I would prefer that the dispensaries stay safe and that the security plan be on file with AZDHS where it's not available to the public for someone to make a public records request. So, with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Al Brandi.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, I just do want to note that we have this letter here from the Elliott Commerce Park Owners Association, just to acknowledge that I do appreciate your point of view and your observation that parking doesn't seem to be an issue. However, Ms. Donna Powell, the manager on behalf of the association, claims in the letter that there is. So, either somebody, it's an opinion issue, or depending on when you look at it, but just to acknowledge up here that we received this, and, you know, somebody has made a complaint, the validity of which is, or the validity of your observation is unknown. That's all.
Yes, Vice Chair Commissioner, and I acknowledge that. That's why we raised it. We're happy to sit down and talk to them about it.
All right. I, there's nobody else that wishes to speak, and thank you for your comments, and we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the dais. Is there any discussion needed up here? Okay.
I'll start. So, I appreciate the clarifications, very helpful. And, yeah, I think, I think as long as the applicant is willing to, they sit on the Owners Association there in the park, so hopefully they can, through that relationship, soften the situation and make sure everybody likes what they're doing. As far as the two issues on the agenda tonight, I personally, I don't have a problem with the interior modifications. I think letting them do that as fits their needs, as long as the town is getting an opportunity as a planning staff to review it and approve it and make sure it does everything they need to do, I'm good with that. And I tend to agree, having a security plan, especially for a dispensary where someone may wish to learn something they shouldn't be learning, I think it's probably not inappropriate that that be obscured from public view. So, I'm okay with both issues.
I'd like to, I'd agree. It seems to me that with regards to the parking situation, they're in compliance with the parking, whether they add square footage to available public use or not. And with regards to the security, I believe from a personal perspective, I think it should be stricken, so I would agree. And, passes.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion or comment? I'll entertain either. Ready to move? All right.
All right. Vice Chairman, I move to approve UP 19-49.
1105-A.
Wrong. Am I the wrong one? Am I reading the wrong one?
No, you might have got the wrong number. I got the old number.
1105-A. Why am I the wrong one here?
19-45 is the current, it's a subset of 11-dash.
Thank you, okay, so.
Okay, so sorry.
I'm reading the staff recommendation here, so. All right, move to approve UP 11-05-A for a request to modify a conditional use permit as outlined in the staff report with the stipulations or with the conditions noted in the staff report.
Do we need something else, staff?
We had it right the first time, didn't we? And I messed him up, so sorry. But they're both related to this project.
I can restate it.
The current case is UP 19-49.
And Commissioner Cavany, you can also say item 19, I believe it is.
Okay.
29. There you go.
Okay, let's make this simple. I move to approve item 29.
Go.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Enemus. All right. Administrative items are for the commission and board discussion in action. It is discretion of the majority of the board and commission regarding public input requests on any administrative items. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the item number which you wish to address. Commissioner, are there any? Okay. Commissioner Cavany, would you care to move on the planning minutes? You may have to recuse yourself on one of those.
I was here. For both of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I move to, what's that? Yeah, I was here this week, these last two meetings, yes. I move to approve the minutes from the December 4th and December 18th meetings.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Are there any reports from the chairman or members of the commission on current events? Get an update on Commissioner Moyns-Schulder after his PSA at the last meeting, so, dang it. All right. Anything else?
Anybody?
Okay. Report from Planning Services Manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick announcements. The first is, it's not noted in your agenda, but there is a special planning commission meeting. The general plan is the only topic. That's January 22nd in this room. Secondly, Nathan Williams, who presented tonight, has transferred to transportation planning, so I wanted to congratulate him. He is now the senior transportation planner for the town. I know that, I believe he's already left, but I thought you might be interested to hear that. And lastly, at the last meeting, there was discussion on the percentage of multifamily, the percentage of residential, and just different zoning categories within the town. We thought you may be interested. We had the GIS team run a chart of the percentages of different uses and a pie chart at the bottom. There is no magic number or any goal number that we're trying to reach for any category, but this is the most current information, and since there were commission questions about it, I'll hand these out, and then, it's not scheduled for discussion, but just for your information.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, this meeting's done. I adjourn the meeting.